All right, good evening. Going to call to order the zoning board of appeals Thursday, July 20th, 7:00 P.M. The first agenda item is the Manzen Bud's Good Hearing. Do we have someone representing? Yes, sir, come on up and...
Good evening.
Do me a favor, hang on one second. Should we open this one? I know we continue it.
We did.
Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead, sir. This is continuing, go for it.
All right. My name is Phil Silverman. I'm here on behalf of Bud's Goods and Provisions. And what we're seeking to do is amend the existing special permit to replace Bud's Goods and Provisions with an affiliate entity called Bud's Goods and Services. And this is really just largely for tax purposes and other financial benefits that accrue in that sense. There's no change in the operations, really very simple. But I just want to back up so that everybody understands, a little history here so it all makes sense to everybody. This permit was originally granted, I think it was back in 2018, and it was granted originally under the name Alex Mazin, and then that was corrected, it was Alex Mazin and Trichome Health Corp. And then what happened is Trichome Health Corp. just underwent a name change, okay, to Bud's Goods and Provisions. So that's why, that's what it exists as now, Bud's Goods and Provisions. And all we're seeking to do is transfer it to an entity called Bud's Goods and Services Corp., okay? Same owner, same people running it, no distinction in the operations whatsoever. It's, again, there's some tax benefits to doing this and some other, you know, structural and financial benefits, so that's what we're trying to accomplish. That's the first part. The second part is really just to expand the hours of operation from 6:00 A.M. to 10:00 P.M. We think we can run two shifts here. You know, there's a lot of interest in what this company does. We see great prospects for it, quite frankly, and so we just want to have some flexibility to have two shifts. So those are the two things that we're requesting tonight.
Okay. I believe I'm going to read a couple of memos into the record. The first one is from the planning board dated June 12th. At their June 8, 2023 meeting, planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. Board has no comment. Board of Health memo dated June 8. We received a copy of the petition for hearing of 475 Kenneth's Wealth Drive, and the Board has no health... The Board of Health has no objections to the name change. We also have a memo from the Conservation Commission dated June 8, 475 Kenneth's Wealth Drive. There are no wet win issues at this location. And I believe the selectmen have approved this at their, well, maybe not their last meeting, but a prior meeting, that was the reason we would continue, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any additional comments, Mark?
No.
Amy, since you're here?
No.
No comments? I know you've already reviewed this. Counsel has already told us what you've already told us, that it's just a name change, so...
Okay, great.
Nothing personal, but I rely on our town council.
I get it.
Um, any questions from other board members? Questions regarding the hours, adding the additional hours? The original hours for the record that we had permitted were Monday through Friday, 8:00 A.M. to 9:00 P.M. Saturday, 9:00 A.M. to 6:00 P.M. Sunday, 10:00 A.M. to 6:00 P.M. This is an industrial park that you guys are located in, so I personally don't see any significant issues with going to those hours. Other operations do that as well, so... This is 7:00 to 8:00?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the modification to the special permit.
I'll make the motion, we approve the name change and the expanded hours.
Okay. All second. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, have a good one.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up, we have the NASA Property Holdings LLC hearing, and I have a letter, or actually an email, from the petitioner. It's for the property at 156 County Street on July 11th, emailed to the planning department. I'm requesting that the project at 156 County Street be tabled for another month to the August ZBA meeting. What's the date?
I believe it's the 7th.
They received a fairly substantial...
Yep, 17.
Okay, they received fairly substantial fire comments, I'm assuming from the fire department, and they need to reevaluate the project. So we have a motion to continue to August 17th, 2023. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Excuse me, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries to continue. Okay, next agenda item, the Thomas Tera hearing. Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, July 20th, 7:00 P.M. Lakeville Public Library, 4th Precinct Street, upon the petition of Thomas Tera. Variance is requested under 5.1 to construct an addition that would extend into the front setback. Property site is 8 Birch Street. All relevant material was located at the planning department. Okay, a couple of memos to read into the record. First, on July 10th, we received a memo from the Board of Health. We received a copy of the petition for 8 Birch Street, and the proposed addition will not interfere with the existing septic system, provided the addition does not increase the number of bedrooms, if it does not increase the number of bedrooms. Board of Health has no objections to the addition. Board of Health would like to request a layout of the rooms to confirm that the dwelling will remain a two-bedroom dwelling. Also have a memo from the planning board dated July 17th, at their Thursday, July 13th meeting. The planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. Board has no comments regarding this petition. Okay, who is here on behalf of the Terras?
I am. Tom Tera.
Tom Tera, how are you?
I'm good.
Why don't you come on up and speak to us, tell us what you're doing, so we can get you on tape and on the record.
What we're trying to do is just go 10 extra feet towards the road, which we have, we'll end up with 30 feet from the existing house now. As far as bedrooms, the bedrooms are going to be enlarged. My daughter's pregnant, so she needs more room, and that's the reason why we want to make the house a little bit bigger. Other than that, everything else, I think, on the print doesn't need to be, have a variance.
Okay, so you are going to keep it to two bedrooms, which was the only comment the Board of Health wanted to make sure that was met. Questions, actually, Mark, do you have any comments on this one?
No, I don't.
Questions from board members? We have the floor plan in front of us.
Yes, I do have. When you expand the house from the existing dwelling, 10 feet on that side? By scale rights, I'm not going to argue with the Board of Health, but it looks like you have to be 20 feet away from the building to the septic system. It doesn't look like that, but if they don't have a problem with it, I don't.
Well, the 20 feet is only if you're going to have a cellar. I've been in construction my whole life, too. The cellar, it's going to be a crawl space on that portion of the house.
Then you can go with 10. Then you can go with 10. I'm outback engineer.
Okay.
Okay, so there's no cellar? That's not an issue. Any other questions? Anyone from the audience? Any comments? Okay, I think the only thing we would need to condition is that potentially if someone wants to make a motion, that we make sure that they bring a, let's see, how did the Board of Health put it?
Floor plan.
Floor plan, yes. The only condition I would encourage someone to put on this, if they want to make a motion, is that a floor plan needs to be submitted to the Board of Health prior to issuance of a building permit.
Yeah, which we need the plans drawn up yet anyway. We didn't want to go ahead, want to get the variance for the front first, and we're ready to have prints made up anyway.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve.
With the condition?
With the condition that we have a floor plan.
Submitted to the Board of Health. We have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Kathy, you're up.
We have 14 days to do the paperwork. After that, we'll go to the town clerk, and it will be in our office for 20 days. So if there's no appeals, if there's no appeals, then she'll sign off on it, I'll let you know, and then you can come get it, and then you record it at the registry of deeds.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome, good luck.
Yep.
Thank you.
Congratulations, by the way. Okay, the next agenda item is the, hopefully I'm pronouncing this correctly, the Chapin hearing. If it isn't, Chris can correct me when he comes up, so...
Yep, there you go.
Good. Okay, hang on one second. Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, July 20th, 7:00 P.M. in the Lakeville Public Library, 4th Precinct Street, upon the petition of Chris Chapin. Special permit is requested under 6.1.3 and 7.4.1 to construct a 10-by-12 addition and an 8-by-10 deck, and increase the roof pitch to allow attic storage on a non-conforming structure located on a non-conforming lot. The property site is 24 Beechwood Ave., and is owned by Naleon Inc. Documents were available at the planning department. Couple of memos to read into the record. July 10th memo from the Board of Health. Board of Health has received a copy of petition 24 Beechwood. Board of Health has no objections to the proposed addition. Planning board memo of July 17th, at their Thursday, July 13th meeting. The planning board reviewed the above referenced petition from, the hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board has no comments on this petition. Okay, Chris, you're up, tell us what you're doing.
Basically, I bought a smaller home, 560 square feet, looking to increase the square footage of it a bit, to make it a little bit more livable. Also, it is a home that does not have a foundation. It's on peers, so there's essentially not a cellar in it, so I'm looking to create a little bit more storage. So essentially, I'm going from 560 square feet to 760 square feet, which puts me at about 15% of the lot coverage. I'm not encroaching on any further of the setback, so it's, I'm not making it any more non-conforming, and I'm taking the pitch of the roof from a 3 to a 6, not creating living space. There's no more than 5 foot of space in the storage space that will be above the living area.
I think you tried to get ahead of us and answer all of our questions, didn't you, Chris?
The other thing, I think if the addition is on here...
Questions for the petitioner? Mark, any comments? Anyone in the audience? Any comments? You guys know what I'm going to say next.
Yep.
Want to make a motion?
I make a motion, we approve this petition.
No conditions? Any, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good old Kathy, did you hear what you said last time about the 20 days?
I'm familiar, yes, thank you.
Okay, next agenda item, Garbit fight. Jamie's here. I see Jamie walking up. While he's walking, I'll read. Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, July 20th, 7:00 P.M. in the Lakeville Public Library, 4th Precinct Street, upon the petition of Renee Garbit and Leo Pike Jr. Special permit is requested under 6.1.3 and 7.4 to construct a porch landing an existing building location on a non-conforming structure located on a non-conforming lot. Variance from 7.8.3.7 is also requested, allowing the accessory apartment and principal dwelling to be serviced by two electric meters/services. Property site is 29 Staple Shores Road. All of the relevant materials were located at the planning department. So first, I'm going to read a couple of memos into the record. Board of Health dated July 10th, they have received a copy of the petition for hearing 29 Staple Shores Road, and the Board of Health does not have any objections to the proposed porch for having two utility connections. Memo from the planning board dated July 17th, at their Thursday, July 13th, 2023 meeting. The planning board reviewed the above referenced petitions in regards to 29 Staple Shores Road. From the Board of Appeals, Board has no comment regarding this petition. For the record, sir, you are...
Jamie Bisnet, Zenith Consulting Engineers.
Okay, tell us what we're doing, Jamie.
Good evening. Earlier this year, I was in front of you, I believe, for this exact property. We received a special permit to raise and construct the dwelling on the property. During construction, there was an issue in which the house itself was constructed a couple of feet forward, which still met the setback, as shown on the plan, but the porch that's critical for the architectural look of the house would actually exceed closer to the street than previously thought. So we're back in front of you for a special permit or variance for that. Also, during Nate's inspections, he found that there were 2 meters on the house. There is a section in the zoning bylaw that talks about having one service, so I spoke with him, and he said to request this. He didn't think it was a big deal, but ultimately, it's a zoning code, so that we would need to have that addressed. So I can try to get into any details if you have questions, but that's really the gist of it.
But there was already a second service?
Those 2 meters were there, yep. The 2 meters are there, from what I'm told, it's just, there are still 2 meters on the house, yes.
Is the second meter for the accessory apartment?
I believe it is.
Questions?
Was there an accessory apartment there prior to construction?
So, kind of. There was a kitchen in the back, yes. That's actually kind of what led to the mistake on the building going forward, from my understanding, was that there was a kitchen in the back portion, and the wall had an internal jog that the architects didn't catch. So when they, they had a modular house constructed, and they set it in the front, and there was that whatever, 3-foot jog that, due to the kitchen, that wasn't caught. I was not in the house prior to the disturbance, so, but my understanding is that the meters were in place prior to...
I believe in the original special permit, there was reference to an in-law apartment to begin with anyways.
Yes, yes. This was for an in-law apartment, yes.
So what exactly is the need for 2 meters at this point?
There really isn't one, except for the fact that the electricians have already wired the house that way. So Nate, in looking at it, saw it, and asked us to just get coverage for that. They would have to rip apart the drywall and rewire the house, if it's not granted.
So to me, this sounds like this is going to be about the unit residence.
It's not...
The second meter?
Sure, no, I understand. The people that have lived there have lived there for a long time. It's the mom and, I went to school with the kids, now the kids live in the main part of the house, and the mom lives in the in-law. So it's been in the family a very long time. Again, I understand what you're saying, though.
Since we have counsel here, Amy?
Yes.
If we would have conditioned this, that it's only to be used as a one-family, obviously, if you have an in-law apartment, that's technically still the one-family, does that hold up down the road if someone were to resell it, and now they have a separate accessory apartment, and they want to rent it out? Does the town have teeth to say, no, the special permit says you can't have somebody there?
So the special permit will restrict it to family? Is that...
I think that's what, that's what the zoning code, I believe, calls for.
Right.
Yes.
I think the concern is that if we turn around and you have 2 meters, 20 minutes down the road, these people don't live there anymore, now all of a sudden you have an...
Yeah, right away when I saw 2 meters, I, I'm looking at the definitions.
Can you explain again, what's the justification for the second meter?
It's a hardship because the work is done. The meter was on the house before, I believe the meter went out to a barn in the back as well. It was somehow, at some point, added on. The electricians tied onto it, not knowing the zoning code. In fact, I didn't know that, as was part of, the obscure part of the zoning code. When Nate picked up on it, he read a snowboard.
And they just wired it into the other panel? So it doesn't have to be anything else?
My understanding is it would be, it would be a process.
Yeah, why can't they have a sub-panel over that?
I, I don't have an answer to that. I do apologize. But I do know in speaking with Nate and the builder, they said it would be, it would be a process.
What's the average of the second panel?
I believe, I, I don't know.
Outside of the question in regards to the second service, do we have other questions in regards to the application?
What's the property zone for? Is that a single? Right?
Residential.
Residential.
So, okay, thank you.
So it really, it is a little bit problematic by having that separate meter, because it's no longer, it's no longer accessory incidental to the main house. It's basically a dwelling unit. It's not really an accessory dwelling unit. But there is nothing in your bylaw, in the zoning bylaw, that says you can't have 2 meters.
So back to my original question.
Right.
If you tie a condition that basically says, don't do it, if you do do it, we're not going to run into a problem 10 years down the road when someone says, oh, this person's been living here for...
Right. No, they've been living there unpermitted, if that's the case.
So we do have an option, other than having them...
Redo the electric. I mean, how much is the burden for that?
How much what?
How much of a burden for that?
I don't know, that's an opinion question, I can't answer it.
I think that should have been explored as an option.
I agree. Do you have any comments from anyone in the audience? So it sounds like we want to know a little more about how much of a burden this really is, is that correct, or it's irrelevant? I mean, I'll take it to, I mean, if the applicant wants to take it to a vote, we'll take it to a vote.
Were you also discussing the additional setback?
Yeah, we're discussing it all. We got kind of stuck on this, that's why I say, if anybody has any other questions outside of the second service, any other issues with the first part of what he's applying Any comments there, Mr. Young?
I'm just curious, I think if I was to approve it, I would want it to remain as an in-law apartment, a family member, or whatever, and phrase it in such a manner that instead of having a rental unit, basically, because if you do approve it, then it becomes a rental unit. Am I right?
The accessory apartment and principal dwelling shall be serviced and monitored by common utilities.
Boo.
7.8.3.7.
So it's, according to our bylaws, it's supposed to have...
Yes, yep. Yeah, and that's what we're asking for.
Yeah, that's what you're asking for.
All the other utilities would be common, water, septic...
Yes, septic is common, the well is common.
Oh, it's well, okay.
Correct, yep.
And does the accessory apartment meet all the other criteria, meaning the size, one bedroom only, one parking space, all of that?
Yeah, I believe it does. Nate has issued the permit, it's been constructed.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's...
So the accessory apartment is, so right now, it's proposed for family members, so family members no longer are occupying the accessory apartment, is the building designed so that it can be reincorporated into a single-family home?
I, I believe that it's connected in a manner in which it could be, they'd probably have to take apart the kitchen, but yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Let me ask you this, Jamie. Do you want to find out what the burden would be for them to change it, or do you want me to call for, to see if someone wants to make a motion?
I don't know. That's a great question.
That's why I asked you.
Well, I guess you would need to know the burden anyway, to know, to know what the hardship is. Probably information.
And that's why we have her.
So, couldn't even know if it's wired to separate utilities, they could redo the meter box with a single meter, v. both.
Yeah.
Right, sub-panel it, so that it's only got 1 meter. I mean, that'd be easy enough to do.
I'm guessing the answer is yes, that they can. I just don't know what it will take to get there.
I mean, if you want to go back and check with the owners about...
Yes, I think I will.
Because that'd be a relatively minor fix, given the cost of the entire project, so...
Yeah, continue this. Based on Mark and Amy's comments, I would suggest maybe...
Continuance?
We continue this and bring back some additional information, so we can, the Board feels comfortable measuring the real hardship at this point.
Okay.
As opposed to the other options that could happen?
No, absolutely.
So, you'd like to continue until August?
Yes, I would.
So do we say August?
17.
So we have a motion to continue the hearing till August 17?
Motion to continue...
August 17. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you.
See you in a month. Although, wait a minute, I may be seeing you again in a second.
You?
Yeah, I think I saw you on the next one, too. Okay, next agenda item, Barbosa hearing. Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, July 20th, 7:00 P.M. in Lakeville Public Library, 4th Precinct Street. Upon the petition of Julio Barbosa, special permit is requested under 6.1.3 and 7.4 to raise the existing dwelling and garage, and construct new dwelling on a new foundation and a new garage located on a non-conforming lot. The property is 22nd Ave. Application and assortment documents were in the planning department. We have a memo dated July 10th from the Board of Health. The Board of Health has received a copy of the petition for 22nd Ave. Board of Health has, does not have any objections to raising and building a new two-bedroom home, providing there will be a deed restriction limiting the dwelling to two bedrooms, and limiting the dwelling to seasonal use until a year-round potable water supply is provided. The Board of Health requests that a plan showing the proposed tight tank location and installation details be submitted to our office. The lot has sufficient area to install a proposed tight tank. I'm assuming you're aware of those comments. Uh, let's see, we have the planning board memo dated July 17th regarding 22nd Ave. At their Thursday, July 13th, 2023 meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board had no comments regarding this petition. That's it. You're up again.
All right, Jamie Bisnet, Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record. We have a existing single-family dwelling on 2nd Ave. The owner of the property would like to tear it down and rebuild. In your packet, there's a set of architectials. Looks like a big improvement compared to the dwelling that is there. They also are going to take down a portion of the existing garage and reconstruct a garage in its place, so both dwellings will be nice and new and code compliant. The septic system is being addressed with the Board of Health. We've done a tight tank design, that's been, I believe, submitted to the Board of Health for their review and approval. And we do understand about the potable water supply. I think that that's a pretty common, they need year-round water to be a non-seasonal dwelling, so we have no problem with that as well.
Looks like you guys are making an improvement to the property.
How do we feel so?
The Board have a comment or any questions?
Not making any more non-conforming, it looks, they're just improving it.
Honestly, yeah, they're improving, from what I can see, so... Anyone in the audience have a comment or question? Mark?
I have one question.
Yes.
So the Board of Health comments talked about it being seasonal use until a year-round potable water supply is provided. So Clark Shores, this isn't Clark Shores?
It is.
Has private, or public water supply company?
Yes.
Is water line accessible? Not all the streets have it, is it accessible in this neighborhood?
I believe it is. I don't know if it's, if they're able to tap into it yet, but my client believes that they're going to be able to tie into it.
Do they intend to do that?
Yes, they do.
I mean, this would be the time to do that.
They do, intend. And what, what they'll do is, like it said, until there's, you know, potable water year-round, the seasonal use will remain, but they'll bring in proof when, when they've attached to it.
Okay. Are you looking at this, Amy? I didn't know if you had comments. If you were looking at it, I was...
I don't have comments, no, thank you.
Okay, I didn't want to leave you out, so I'm asking everyone else for comments. Okay, we don't have any additional questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
I just, I missed that.
Actually, come on up. We got to get you on record, you got to say your name and your address, no problem.
My name is Dawn Collins, I live in Clark Shores, 7 Carey Street. I just couldn't hear, is it going to be a seasonal home still?
It, it will, it will only be seasonal until they have water hooked up to it. They will not be allowed to live in it year-round until they have potable water.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question? Or do you want more clarification, or now's the time to ask?
There's no well there, it's, they're using the seasonal water from Clark Shores Water Corporation?
Aye.
We're unaware of a well on the property, so there's a tight tank, I don't know.
Thank you.
Tight tank? You can.
Use it year-round.
You can use a tight tank year-round, yep.
Any other comments or questions? Okay.
I'm making a motion to approve the petition.
Okay, motion to approve is applied for, we have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
All set. Okay, next agenda item, LeBaron Residential LLC.
It's time for me to leave.
Look at that, I got you out of here early.
I'm recusing myself.
I'm going to keep going, even though you're going to be here when I start talking, so.
Just come back.
Huh? Oh, he has another meeting yesterday, we're going to be short for the last one.
I have to go be in a couple of other ones.
Oh, okay. Uh, okay. So we have a letter, notice of project change, and I'm not going to read the entire letter into the record because I know counsel is here on behalf of the applicant, but it basically has to do with asking us whether we feel there's a substantial change in this modi, this request of project change or not, so. Attorney Mather, I'm sure you're here on their behalf.
Yes, sir. For your record, my name is Robert Mather, and I do represent the petitioner, LeBaron Residential. I'd like to pass out some forms. You may have these, but we'll give you another one because I will be referring to it. As the board, well-known LeBaron is a 40B project, actually just realized we'll be entering the 20th year of the, of the project. Anytime after a special, after a comprehensive permit is granted, anytime that there are any changes, any changes to the project, a notice of project change has to be sent to the board. The board then has 20 days to decide whether or not the request is substantial or insubstantial. If the board finds that it is substantial, then all that means is then you would schedule a public hearing, because this is not, this is not a noticed public hearing, this did not go in the newspaper, no notices were given to a butters. If the board determines that it's a substantial change, then it has to be scheduled for, for a full hearing. If they determine that the change is insubstantial, then in effect, the request is, is granted. And this is in accordance with Mass. 760 CMR. What we're asking for here is basically a change to Phase 3. The board members, Phase 3 was the 77 single-family homes, 77 lots. The Phase 3 is nearing completion, there is, except for these three lots, there are either all houses on all of the lots or underway, at least foundations in. These are the, the last three. And these are also the three that are going to be closest to the next phase, which is going to be Phase 6, which is the commercial, not excuse me, commercial, the multifamily, three multifamily apartment-type dwell, uh, buildings. So what this change does very simply is, if you look at the plans that I, I put in front of you, you will see on the first page is, this is the existing plan of the, of the project. And we're talking about the lots down bottom here on LeBaron Boulevard, these three right here. And if you notice, it's actually three lots and a right-of-way. The right-of-way was left there because the developer was negotiating with the owners of this adjoining land here. If they, if he was successful in buying that, the idea was that maybe he would come back to the board to add that to the project. That did not take place. The, a butter was not interested in selling, so that was scrapped. So in essence, the right-of-way is not, is not needed. So what we're proposing is just to change those three lots, eliminate the right-of-way. If you look on the second page that I gave to you, you'll see that we're dealing with lots 49, 50, and 50A. And the second page shows the new configuration, 49A, 50A, 51A, and then a parcel shown as parcel A, which is extra land. And the real purpose of this is to provide some separation between Phase 3, the single-family dwellings, and Phase 6, which is the multifamily of the buildings. So parcel A is just going to be added to Phase 6. I think the board knows that we're nearing, coming in with Phase 6. And when we do that, of course, the first thing we'll do is we'll send out a notice of project change, but what I'll do in that letter is I will concede that it's a substantial change, because of course it is. Anytime we've done another phase, there's no question that that is, is substantial. But here, we do believe that this is an insubstantial change. So it's to note, this does not change the number of, of buildings or lots in Phase 3, it's still 77. It's not going to change the number of units that will be in Phase 6, it's merely providing some separation, because the, for example, in the old configuration, the lot at the very bottom, the last lot, Lot 51, that's going to be the closest to the multifamily dwellings. So by eliminating the right-of-way, which is no longer needed, grabbing a, a little extra land, I believe Phase, if you look at, at the plan, it's kind of hard to read because it's small, but parcel A is 10,000 square feet. So they're going to put essentially in a, a lot in between. The reason I say a lot, because the average lots out in, in the 77 single-family homes is about 10,000 square feet. So in summary, we respectfully request the board to make a determination that the modification is insubstantial, and that a full published notice hearing is, is not necessary. Again, three quick reasons. No change in the number of lots in Phase 3, stays the same. No change that will allow any additional units in the last phase, Phase 6, and the modification will actually be a benefit because it'll provide some greater separation between the single-family dwellings and the multifamily dwelling.
Mark, any comments?
Um, not at this time, I mean...
You're going to reserve your right to comment?
Yeah, I'll comment after, as, if, after we have a discussion, so.
Okay. Questions or comments from the...
What are the plans for parcel A? Is it cleared? Will it be landscaped? Is it going to be part of...
It's going to be part, it's just going to be part of, now, one thing that it will not have, it will not have any buildings on it, no buildings on it. It'll either be open space, maybe a portion of it could be parking area, but there will be no, no buildings on it. I did neglect to mention one thing to the, to the board. Certainly not everybody's been on the board since the very beginning here. We have, on three past occasions, gone before the board on insubstantial changes. One was in 2009, that was, that was merely because DHCD mandated, mandated that a change be made regarding the maximum percentage of units that you reserve for Lakeville residents. In 2017, we came in to clarify that there was a 60-day time period to deliver site plans to the building department, we came in to clarify what, when that commenced. And something that you may remember, because in 2020, we came in to eliminate the sidewalks on, I believe it was five of the side streets, and to add a sidewalk on LeBaron Boulevard. In all three of those instances, the board agreed and determined that it was insubstantial, and that we didn't need to go any further on that.
And for the record, my hairstyle hasn't changed much in those 20 years, Bob.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, so potentially it could be parking lot.
Potentially parking lot, yes. But again, separation, right now, if we don't make the change, it's going to be housed there.
Yeah.
Which would be quite close to the, to the multifamily project.
Jerry, any comments or...
I have no comments.
Amy, since you're here.
Um, I, I don't have any comments. The, the change is not a, it's not a change that falls under the examples that are found in the regulations, those are usually when they change the size of the project, they reduce it by 10% or increase it by 10%, or they change the tent, the housing from, you know, for sale to rental, they change the area, this is not anything that's within that. It doesn't seem extremely substantial, it's really a lot, it seems to be a lot line switch.
Just reconfiguring some lines.
Exactly.
It's not going to impact anybody realistically.
Doesn't seem like it's, but again, that's up to you guys.
I agree with you for the record, Bob. Do we have, do you want to make any comments at this point, Mark?
Um, I just, just want to comment a little, just a little bit generally about the project, because it wasn't really, I wasn't here during explaining most of it. So this right-of-way provides access to the land behind the house lots, that wraps all the way around toward the, the town land and then to, to where the wetlands are. That provides a buffer all through that area. I know that there's a couple other access points to that property, but, you know, given that there's going to be 100 units, plus or minus, maybe a little less, in that next phase, that you ought to plan to have some sort of access from that phase into this woodland, maybe a path, maybe something, the other, there, since you're proposing to eliminate that access point right here. The other issue that's come up is obviously, we have 300 units here now, and you're going to be proposing for another, almost 100 units, is that recreation space. So for the next phase, I would recommend that developer plan for providing some recreation area for the kids who live there, so, right, there's, there's been nothing kind of planned for that here. So with another 100 units, that's going to be a bigger issue, so.
We don't want the kids playing in the street, Bob.
Yeah. My, one of my developers is listening, so I'm sure he, he hears that. Also, Mark, there will be an additional access point to the, to the open area in the back at the end of LeBaron Circle. There'll definitely be another, another access point to replace it. The reason that one was where it was, was mostly to have access to the adjoining land, but yes, it was also access to that open area, but that will be provided also.
Okay. Okay. Listen, we have one more thing after this, I'm assuming everyone's not here for the last agenda item, so do we have comments from the audience in regards to this? Because everyone just want to know what's going on. Yes, sir, come on up.
I'd like us to support the gentleman who raised the concern of...
Actually, you got to, we, we can't hear you unless you're over there, so name an address and tell us what you want to...
Yeah, I'm just a resident of the AT LeBaron Boulevard.
Your name?
Alexandra.
Alexander, last name?
Ganzu.
Okay.
And I'm a parent as well, and it's been like summer, it's the first summer when kids are starting socializing, and I think between the parents, we are noticing more and more, probably in need of some space so that kids couldn't play on the streets, we, probably the matter of, of, like, when the summer break started, we did receive so many emails, notifications, kids playing here, kids shouldn't play here, kids playing, like, it, it's just difficult to control kids, and we all probably know this, so I just wanted to support the gentleman that was raising this point as a parent and the resident of that community.
Great, you're on the record, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, no other comments, so at this point, entertain a motion if someone so chooses to basically consider this a non-substantial change.
I will make the motion to classify this as a non-substantial change.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're all set.
We will likely see you in a couple of months.
Lucky us. And I'm guessing we'll have more people at that point in the audience, so. Amy, I'm going to rely on you to keep me on the straight and narrow here, seeing how, I don't think I've had to chair an appeal of the building commissioner before, so. Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, July 20th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the Lakeville Public Library, 4th Precinct Street, upon a petition of an appeal from decision of the Building Inspector slash Zoning Enforcement Officer relative to a business activity in the residential district at 434 Bedford Street, submitted by John Gage Benati. Information was available to the planning department. So I am going to read into the record some memos and comments from other boards. July 10th memo from the Board of Health, the Board of Health has received a copy of the petition for 434 Bedford Street. Board of Health received a complaint of loud power tools at 434 Bedford Street on March 22nd, 2023. The health agent visited the site on March 22nd, 2023 to record the decibel levels. Agent was on the property of 436 Bedford Street approximately 50 feet from the workshop, and the highest decibel level from power tools was 71 decibels. Ambient noise was around 45 decibels, and cars on Bedford Street averaged around 65 decibels. The loudest noise was a passing truck on Bedford Street, which was 73 decibels. Owner of 436 Bedford Street claimed that some days it was louder. The health agent did not find that the noise level was loud enough to warrant a violation. The health agent informed the owner of 436 Bedford Street that he could return if the noise was louder. Have a... Have a memo from the Planning Board dated July 17 regarding 434 Bedford Street. At their Thursday, July 13 meeting, the Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The board had no comments regarding this petition. I believe that is all we have for memos. So what I'm going to do is ask the applicant, Mr. Benati, I'm assuming you're here, sir, if you wanna come up to the podium. And why don't you let us know?
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just quickly, this is a 48, Section 15 appeal, and so the vote needs to be four out of five. And so the applicant might just wanna know that there's only four votes here.
I'm gonna have you explain it very clearly to the applicant so I don't make a mistake. How's that sound?
Sure. This is a five-person, you are a five-person.
We are a five-person board, correct. So counsel just wants to explain the way this is gonna work, just to make sure you're clear for the record, because we only have four people participating at this point, to say.
Right. I mean, we consider the numbers.
Well, yeah, you, you've lowered your odds. We can definitely all agree to that.
That's what it is.
So the options are, I think you could continue, right, if you wanted the full board?
Yeah.
Keep in mind, if you don't continue, and we start now, depending on how long the hearing goes, or if it's continued more than, than once, there are restrictions on who can participate. I forget the name of the-
Mullins Rule.
The, what was it?
Mullins.
The Mullins Rule. We can have somebody miss one meeting, as long as they can review it and get up to speed on it, but if somebody were to miss two meetings, then, you know, it could drag out a little longer. So I just, I'm trying to explain your, your options. So, so keep in mind, if you, my point is, if you start now, you may restrict someone else from potentially participating.
So, but if I start now, I would have to go with the four unanimous?
Not necessarily, but you're, again, you're talking odds here, you're increasing your odds that somebody, that person, you may definitely have to go with four. If you stop and wait for us to have five, then you're increasing your odds that you're gonna have five.
So the member who, who has the lead, Jeff, can participate, let's say we continue it to August, and if we had a full board and we reviewed what happens here tonight, he could participate. But if it continues again and he can't make a meeting, or can't make the August meeting, and the board's-
Then you have to go with whoever's here.
You have to go with who's every year because they cannot miss two. They can only miss one meeting.
So it, it could be decided tonight if it's unanimous, right?
Absolutely.
For me?
Okay. If we vote tonight. We don't, I mean, we may, we may not, we could, we could vote a bunch of different directions.
But if it's not, is, is it gonna be reviewed again with him here for another vote, or?
We don't restart the meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't anticipating that, so I'm not sure how to hedge it.
We weren't anticipating it either. No one gives us, if we knew that ahead of time, we would relay that information to applicants, but.
I don't know. When would the next meeting be?
August 17.
Okay. Could I make any statements here now, or does that stop the meeting?
You could, but I would not suggest it.
Okay.
I mean, keep in mind, everything you've submitted, we have.
Yeah.
So to make a statement-
It's testimony. As soon as testimony is taken, then the meeting, then there has to be a Mullins certificate.
Yeah. See, that's why she's here. Like I said at the beginning, to keep me on the straight and narrow.
If there's no testimony taken, then you could have three different people. It's fine at the next meeting if no testimony's taken. And no testimony would be taken because all you did was read into the record, the public notice and the comments, which are in writing.
Right.
Which are available to the public.
So I can review at the next meeting if I don't start this meeting, if we don't continue here? If we don't continue here tonight and it gets continued to August?
Yeah.
Then I can rebut any stuff, memos and things you have there.
Absolutely.
For instance, the, the health-
Yeah, basically, we're, we're just, we're pausing it until continuing, it's gonna, gonna pause it. There's nothing, there's nothing detrimental to you to continue it if you-
Could I have like five minutes to talk about it with my daughter?
I'll give you five minutes.
All right.
I'll give you, I'll give you a little time. Don't worry about it. Can I do the other stuff?
Do you have minutes or something?
Yep. Okay. No, we actually have a couple things. So we're gonna hold off and table the discussion on Benati for a second. We do have minutes to approve from May 18 and June 15.
Mr. Chairman, that's why I was not present at the June meeting.
Okay. Was, I know I was at all of them. I think you guys were at all of them too. All right. So this is what we're gonna do. You weren't at June, but you were at May, correct? Okay, so let's do the May meeting first. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the May 18 meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. June 15. Jerry will be abstaining. Do we have a motion to approve the June 15 meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the June 15 minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carries. Okay. Mr. Benati, you're back, I see, so we will continue this.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think I will continue.
Okay.
Ask you respectfully to continue with us.
Okay, that's fine. Understandable. So we have a request to continue the Benati hearing deal until August 17.
I'll make a motion to continue to, I will submit.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries.
Okay.
We'll see you in August, sir.
See you in a while.
Okay, let's see. We have one more item before us, and I think, Kathy, this was a last-minute addition, so I think we have to first vote to accept this as part of the revised agenda because it was done within 48 hours, correct? Is that right?
No, you don't have to vote.
No? No? Do we have to, if we put something on the agenda within 48 hours?
Within 48 hours? You, you have to determine that, that it was unanticipated as the chair-
Or do we have it?
No.
We didn't have it ahead of time?
No, no.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so it was, so I don't have to vote on it. I can just say that it was un-
It should be in the minutes at the chair that this is unanticipated.
This was unanticipated, actually, really good. There was no way to anticipate it because it's dated July 20, so. So it was a profit. So there was no way this was anticipated, but we are going to review, review and ask for an approval of a preference letter. So in regards to the, and everyone has a copy of this, it was sent out by Kathy this afternoon, the North Bedford Crossing at 109 Bedford Street project, the, we have a letter that is basically asking that there is local preference for the project. And I guess I'll, rather than read the entire letter, I will, the local preference will be residents of the town of Lakeville, employees of the town of Lakeville, and in this order, teachers employed by the federal, excuse me, by the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District.
I thought-
Can I comment? Go right ahead.
What? I thought we already did this. I thought it was already approved for-
It's in the approval?
Yeah.
Yes, it's, those are the conditions that are in the approval, that there be a local preference for those three reasons. Mike O'Shaughnessy, the attorney for the applicant, requested this letter. I believe he needs it for justification to DHCD to incorporate a local preference.
So basically, we're just codifying what was put in the permit issued in the letter that we need to, that they need to send to DHCD.
Yes. And it's not DHCD anymore.
But why is, why is the zoning board of appeals voting on this?
Because it was a copy of its permit.
Right, but it's not changing the permit at all. It's following the permit.
No.
So I think you just sign it.
Yeah, I just didn't, I wasn't sure whether it needed their endorsement, so to speak. That's all.
I think it would need their endorsement if we were, if we were deviating from the condition, that this is what the condition says. This is exactly what the condition says.
You have the authority to sign on our behalf, Mark.
I will sign on your behalf.
It's just FYI, then.
FYI.
So it was not, it didn't need to be an agenda item. It was just an administrative item.
Good.
Leave it under administrative items.
Okay. Next meeting, August 17. Do we have any other business to come before the board?
Yes.
Yes? Say yes.
Oh, yes, we're gonna, another administrative item that we are going to pass out, as we had talked previously.
Oh, yes.
The rules and regs for the board to review. And at one of the future meetings, probably maybe August, but most likely September, we can put it on the agenda and discuss any comments you have and any modifications I might, you know, recommend, so.
So this hasn't been updated since 1988, is that correct?
That's correct.
Wow. I did have a full head of hair in 1988 as opposed to when LaBarren started. Okay. Any other comments or other business? I will entertain a motion to adjourn then.